...in session. Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Excuse?
Councilmember Shvednik.
Here.
I need to bring us out of executive act, uh, executive session and nothing, no action will be taken. If you will please stand. And Mr. Michaelman, would you please lead us in the flag slide?
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, King County Climate Change or Climate Collaboration. Rachel Brumbaugh, King County Energy Policy and Partnership Specialist.
Good evening. I'm Megan Smith. I'm the Director of Climate and Energy Initiatives for King County, and I'm actually going to kick us off and then be joined by Rachel Brumbaugh, my colleague here, who's our Energy Partnership Specialist. So we're here tonight to share a little bit about the King County City's Climate Collaboration, also known as K4C for short. Can be a resource for the city of Kenmore if you chose to join K4C, and also can help to respond to constituent concerns about some of the climate impacts they're seeing, or maybe when folks come in and say, "I have an interest in the city pursuing 100% clean energy." And some of the questions we get from cities who are considering joining K4C is, "Why this? We have so many different coalitions on different topics around the county. We have limited resources, limited time. Why take this on?" "Will local climate action by a small or medium-sized city make a difference and a dent in this global issue?" "And how would joining K4C really add value to the city?" So I hope over the course of a short presentation by myself and Rachel, we can answer some of those questions and then leave some time for you to ask additional questions. So I want to start first. Okay. I want to start first with just highlighting a few of the climate impacts people are already seeing that I imagine you're hearing about from folks in your city that we hear a lot about. And one I'll highlight is down in the bottom center there, poor air quality and smoke. I think if we look back to last summer, almost everybody around the region experienced that. Days and days of high temperatures and smoke. And during time periods like that, we see more admissions to the hospital. It's something that really widely impacts people. Moving up to kind of the center-left, record temperatures. And we kind of think about 2015 and 2017 were sort of a glimpse of the future. So 2015, we saw the hottest year on record for Washington State. 2017 hottest summer, driest summer in Seattle on record. And then going up to the top, upper-left, when you think about flooding, that's an issue I've worked on for about 25 years, and it seems like more and more we'll hear people say, "God, didn't we just have a 100-year flood last year?" I think people are starting to see those impacts very directly. And then when we start to think about future changes, and kind of what's coming our way, I just wanted to highlight a few that are kind of of interest to this area in Kenmore, on the Smamish River. And when you look at the upper-left, increasing stress for salmon, think about the salmon runs in the Smamish River. They're waiting in Lake Washington to come up late summer and fall. Water temperatures are really high in the river. Despite a lot of effort by community groups to plant trees and improve that river, we're seeing those temperatures get hotter and hotter. And in about 80% of the streams we monitor in King County, we're hitting lethal levels of temperature for salmon in the summer. So you think about all those investments we've made collectively are really put in jeopardy. The other thing we expect to see more of in the kind of that, see that no swimming sign, is harmful algae blooms in Lake Washington and other water bodies where people are out recreating. And then in the arena of stormwater, we expect that the heaviest rainfall events are going to be about 22% more severe by 2080. And that's a long way off. Think about 2080. God, that's, you know, beyond my lifetime for sure. But when you look at the timeframes we design assets for, for stormwater, roads, bridges, wastewater, we're really looking at that kind of a timeframe. And as local governments, we don't want to have to go back and rebuild something in a couple of decades because we didn't size it properly. So we're really thinking about that as well. And then when you think about acting on climate change, you know, I, even, I will say, even in King County and some of our own agencies, and we started working a lot on things like energy efficiency. People would say, "God, this seems like an additional thing. It's an add-on. Why do I have to do this additional thing?" And so really think about it as part of being a good steward of public tax dollars. So when I think about something like energy efficiency investments, you know, we'll, we'll do something fairly straightforward like an LED lighting retrofit. We're finding those can pay off in about one to two years through reduced utility bills. Just as one example, at the Shoreline Transfer Station, just replacing the lighting reduced energy demand by 13%. Sometimes we'll go deeper. At the King County International Airport, we've cut energy use, electricity by 70% with some HVAC and energy efficiency upgrades. And then we're also finding that we can get revenue out of producing renewable energy. So right now, we produce about the equivalent to what we use for electricity needs in King County buildings and facilities. And at our south wastewater treatment plant, it generated about $6 million in revenue last year. So we can capture natural gas there from the wastewater treatment process, sell that, and then sell the environmental attributes. So it's a, from a financial standpoint, it's a good thing to do. And when I look at the upper-left of that, we see increasing regional mobility options, reduce pollution, improve quality of life. Rachel and I just enjoyed your new community space across the street. And when you think about the things people want for community of life, you know, you have this great regional trail down here. They want easy access to transit, parks, open space. Those things are very often the thing that we need to do for climate change as well. So the last example I'd highlight there is about electricity purchase. And through work of the K4C or King County Cities Climate Collaboration, we've really been advocating with PSC to give us a new renewable energy purchase option. They created one. It's called Green Direct Wind Power for governments and businesses. And we're able to cut our greenhouse gas emissions by 20% by converting over to that energy option. And we actually think we're going to save a significant amount of money over the term of that agreement. So those are a few examples of kind of the good value things of doing this climate work and really have, those values have been extended through K4C. So King County Cities Climate Collaboration is the place where cities and the county can come together to share those tools and approaches and often advocate for things together, like PSC Green Direct option. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Rachel Brumbaugh, who's going to go into a little bit more detail about the K4C. And she's also an expert on Green Direct if people have questions about that, so.
The only thing I want to add about Green Direct is not only is it going to reduce our direct carbon emissions, it will, the wind component of it, the development of that farm down in Lewis County will create 300 construction jobs in an area that, that needs work. So that's something that we're excited about, taking that holistic approach to moving the needle. I will jump into what is the K4C? So right now, it is King County and 13 cities, as you can see on the map there. And the Port of Seattle joined earlier this year. We're pleased to have them. The population of both the county and the cities, the port, we calculate the residents there a little different. It's 75% of the 2.2 million people that live in our lovely county. So that grouping together really brings a big amount of the population, and that speaks many times with one voice. So, so what are the benefits and why? You know, and I really think about it, if I could use one word, it would be efficiency. And how that works is we are able to share resources. I'm fortunate enough at the county that my, I am allocated 100% of the time to climate and energy work. And I know that most cities don't have that type of staff position. So we serve as a resource to cities that don't have that. For example, on the Green Direct, just to go back to that, I created financial models that showed what a 10- or 15- or 20-year term would look like. And you could put in your, your load and run out the projections and see if it was a cost or benefit and win. And PSC actually took these models and shared them with everyone else, and I shared them with everyone in the K4C so they could do their own analysis. But beyond that, the, the sharing is really the efficiency from coming together and speaking in one voice and speaking with that 1.75 million constituents and speaking as a region to, to talk. We also, we do work together on our communications. And one thing that, that we don't really have up there is, is we are accountable to each other and kind of keep each other moving towards that direction and keep that excitement going about the work. And the work is, at a very, very high level, we have a goal of reducing countywide carbon pollution by 80% by 2050 with stair steps along the way of 25% by 2020 and 50% by 2030. And that takes in all countywide. That's transportation-related emissions, it's buildings, et cetera. So how we do that, like, I could speak at length about that, I'm not going to now. But how do we, as local governments, support and work towards this goal? Is through the powers that we have. So land use and transportation planning, you can see that with dense, attractive environments that are near transit. Building codes, building very nice, efficient buildings that reduce energy consumption. Purchasing, again, using your purchasing power, both in, in day-to-day decisions of paper, but also getting together to advocate for cleaner electricity supplies. Producing renewable energy, that's something that Megan mentioned, that we produce at our landfill and wastewater treatment plants. But we also have solar, and as do many partners, on rooftop. And then, lastly, advocacy at the state and federal level, which is increasingly important, particularly with the pullback at the federal level from policy. I just want to share a little bit about what we did in 2017. We've mentioned Green Direct several times, but we did work with the Utilities and Transportation Commission and PSC to get this going, and it should come online in 2019. Something we did introduce is the Fund to Reduce Energy Demand for Cities, which will allow cities to borrow from King County at a very low interest rate for renewable energy production investments or energy efficiency work. We had commented on several cases at the state regulatory agency, UTC, and the state on energy and climate policies, letters, and testimony. We are wrapping up technical and policy analysis on how to achieve a 90% renewable electricity supply goal, which is one of our policies nested underneath that overarching carbon reduction goal. And there's a bunch of just different initiatives that we're working on that reach out to staff level for both training and assistance, work, work groups and workshops for building officials, for permit staff to learn about the green building types, salmon safe training, working with fleet managers in transit agencies and in the, in the fleets to learn about electric vehicles and, and, you know, to move that needle there. So I'm going to stop here for just a second and make sure that there's no overarching questions and check, do a time check. If you want to hold questions at the end, we can do that. I want to talk about 2018.
Questions?
Questions?
Any questions? I'll, I'll hold mine till the end, but I have one for you and what, some of the things you said in the beginning.
Great. I just realized I'd been talking for quite a while.
No, that's fine.
And nobody had gotten a word edgewise. So in 2018, which we're midway through at this point, what we are working on is taking those lessons learned from that study that we've commissioned and translating it into an action agenda. What can we do at our individual local government level with respect to building codes, with respect to transportation, with respect to renewable energy production, but also mapping out a strategy at the state level to advocate at the Utilities and Transportation Commission. There are several dockets that are queuing up for the year and also for the 2019 legislative session, which promises to be another active one like this year's. We are also, like I mentioned, looking at green building training and tools for cities. We're updating our communication tools. I think there's been several climate events, as Megan mentioned, that we can translate into a more approachable language, I think, than, than we potentially have in the past. And again, Sustainable Cities Round Tables, which are open to the public and feature a wide variety of topics from transit to green building, to speakers that also talk about equity and livable cities. So they're, they're very interesting. Let me switch a little bit to the nitty-gritty. How, how do you join the K4C if you're interested? So we have an inter-local agreement. It's a, it's a fairly short document. It outlines really broad commitment to collaboration and goals. There's, there's, it says we're going to cooperate, we want to join, we want to participate, we're in. There are annual financial contributions based on population. For Kenmore, the annual contribution would be $1,200 a year, and that can be prorated if you were to join mid-year. So we would like to think it's fairly reasonable. There is also the Joint County-City Climate Commitments. And there's actually some detail, I think, in the, in the back of the PowerPoint that speaks to some of these specific policy goals and pathways. And, and that is much more detailed, it's stronger. It really commits to, to some more concrete actions that a partner would take. Staff meets eight to 10 times a year every other month. There's a couple budget meetings in there. And the meetings last an hour, hour and a half. They're really collaborative. It's a great team. We share our ideas, we share the projects, we move to advance on, on projects that are underway. And elected officials, there are summits typically once or twice a year. We like to have them twice. And everyone, all elected officials from King County are invited. Do not have to be a K4C member to show up to the summit. These are, again, about two hours. They're led by King County Executive Dow Constantine. And they are also a very good place to network, to understand, to share goals, and to understand what staff and the teams have been working on throughout the year. This fall, we are anticipating having one in mid-September. And we will lay out likely the legislative priorities for the year and the tactics to approach at the state and some other agenda items that are yet to be determined. So now I'll open it up for questions. Thank you for listening.
Questions? So back on your initial presentation, the salmon in, in the, in the Smamish River, and the fact that temperatures too warm. You know, this is something that we've been working on for a number of years. I mean, first of all, the river is in terrible need of dredging. Sedimentation's coming down from Lake Smamish. There is erosion. There is tons of surface water runoff from Boeing area up on Swamp Creek. I think we sued them a year, we were part of a lawsuit a year or two ago for a parking lot that they had put in that wasn't permitted, that was, that was contributing a lot. And so all of these things are contributing, I think, to the warm temperature in the river. And what kind of help can, can we get from this group to correct some of these problems, to help restore the salmon runs to that river? Because as you said, they're sitting waiting out here in the lake, but the river's too warm.
So I think part of it is, you know, you have the WIRE-Aid, the Cedar Lakes Mamish Sam Recovery Forum, and also the Flood District. So those are two places you've got those intersections for.
Well, we're active in WIRE-Aid.
In act, okay.
And, and there's, the river itself, there's not really flooding from. So, you know, the Flood Control District is, tends to, we've gotten some funding from them in the past for different projects, but it's not a reliable source.
Yeah. So from a, from a climate impact standpoint, what's happening more and more in the WIRE is, and this is kind of, I think it's kind of analogous to how we're thinking about things like stormwater management, you know, design of wastewater infrastructure, is trying to get a better handle of the climate impacts that are coming and factoring that into your planning, design, and priorities for things like, what are you doing on habitat restoration? What are you doing for stormwater controls? What are you doing to manage erosion and sedimentation? How do you design and, and manage flood hazard reduction? And things like if you've got a dredging area. So it's more adding another layer of information in there about what kind of impacts are we expecting and how do we plan for those? How do we factor that into our designs and our priorities?
See, we've been working with Forterra. And all the cities along the river, Redmond, Woodinville, Bothell, us, working to try to, with Forterra, with the thought of them taking the lead and doing efforts to restore the river like they're doing with the Duhamish. So we are being very proactive with this. But we've set up remote monitoring in the river, where we're monitoring, monitoring a number of things that can be accessed in real time on the web. So there are things that we've been doing for some time. So where would you guys fit into working with us to help us do this?
So two, two things. And I hope this doesn't cause confusion. So the King County Cities Climate Collaboration is, is very focused on the emission reduction side of the equation. So what do we do in transportation, land use, building codes, electricity supply to reduce the emission side? We actually do have another regional collaboration that's on the preparedness side of how do we share the science across, actually, the Central Puget Sound region, counties, cities, tribes, so that we can better inform things like our Sam recovery efforts or our stormwater designs? Because we're all wrestling with that. I would say this particular cost-sharing effort doesn't have resources for things like, you know, a stormwater project or erosion, sedimentation, or habitat, but it should complement those efforts.
You know, one of the problems I see is that the downstream communities across the state are the ones that are suffering, right? Actions, because we don't have the same regulations, King County's regulations are much stricter than Snohomish County. So as a result, we're the end of the stream, and so everybody upstream tends to dump on us. And that's the way it is all throughout the state, with, you know, the cities having these different surface water regulations and make it, make it tougher on all of the downstream communities. So we're not alone here. So is there anything you or another group is doing on a larger scale to help with some of these issues?
Yeah, so, so the Puget Sound Climate Preparedness Collaborative. So again, on the preparedness side of things, that was launched fairly recently. So that's the four counties, Central Puget Sound area, so King Pierce, Snohomish, Kitsap. And it's, it's government-focused, so it's cities, counties, tribes, ports, sound transit. That was launched relatively recently, and actually, the first issue we chose to come together on is stormwater. So Snohomish County is very active in that. What we're trying to do is, if we're doing research, let's try to do it consistently. If we can do joint research, let's do it. If we can harmonize some of the regulation, regulation design standards, let's do it. It gives us a forum to, to do that work together. So, and I, for the, this King County Cities Climate Collaboration on the emission side, when you think about something like green building codes, like you have this incredible building here, we have cities and the county at very different places in things like building codes. So it is a place to come together and say, "How could we be more consistent on those?" So analogous, I say, I don't have a solution on the, you know, some of the other regulations, but it is a kind of forum where we can come together and try to get more consistent.
Go ahead, Shvednik.
Just a couple of quick questions. So I was trying to get on your website, couldn't quite get there, but to what I was looking for. But I think in one of the earlier documents, maybe 2016 or 2017, there was mention of a, more of a calculator or a shared measurement around emissions. And I'm wondering, I, I think that was on a, a couple of years ago agenda, so I'm wondering where that's at. So that's one question. And then I also noticed that the Sustainable Cities, the Round Table schedule, it looks like nothing since March, and I was just curious if that was going to be restarted or what, again, sort of a status on both of those.
I'll, I'll speak to the Sustainable Cities Round Table. I, I'm not sure why that hasn't been updated. There is a draft schedule for the year. As the year goes on, it gets a little shakier as things aren't lined up. But I could get one of those and send that to you. I just think someone has not updated the website, unfortunately. And your question about emissions inventory. So we actually have an updated one that we just finished late in 2017. And it not only shows where the emissions are throughout King County building, you know, commercial, residential, transportation-related, industrial-related. Then it also does break down what are the different sources of emissions, let's say, within the residential sector? Heating, heating from gas, heating from electricity. So we do measure and monitor that. Something we also did in this last round was looking at what are those drivers of the, the emissions inventory? The good, well, it's good and bad news. Our emissions for King County have remained fairly stable since the last time we analyzed them. That's not a great success story, but we have had a population increase of nearly, was it 15%? I, I don't know the exact number. So the per capita emissions actually are declining fairly consistently. And that's a success story, and it, it drives from, no pun intended, increased transit. We've had a huge uptake in ridership. What's, what is driving the increase in emissions is frankly, population growth. But there's a lot of good policy that is driving down the emissions. And some of that is the renewable portfolio standard for our electricity supply. Some of it is increased efficiency in the commercial building sector. So those are some of the major things. So we are tracking that to, to see where can we be impactful? What, what bites do we need to take off that, that we can look at? And how do we approach each sector? And that's, that, that, there's no one-size-fits-all solution. It is, what are you going to do in this residential segment that's using natural gas? What are you going to do in this commercial segment that's using natural? I mean, what are you going to do in the transportation sector, which is a, a huge component of the carbon-related emissions in the county?
Thanks. Welcome.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Megan, Rachel, I want to thank you guys for coming out here and presenting. I don't really have a question. I just want to make a quick statement. You know, climate change is kind of bigger than things we normally deal with as a city. Normally, we deal with things like building sidewalks or opening parks, and that's all fun and we enjoy that. But climate change is probably the biggest thing we're facing in our lifetime. And, you know, I understand the pushback of, well, what can Little Kenmore do to address a global problem? But if everybody treats it that way, then we're not going to do anything. We are going to be doomed. This is kind of the absolute minimum, I think, we can do to kind of join the conversation and work with partners towards finding ways so that Little Kenmore can help out with the problem. And we do this in a lot of other fields. You know, we work with Arch with other cities to address affordable housing, and we partner with them. And we use Arch as a resource when we're working on housing policy. Or we partner with other cities at ETP and with Seashore, where we share information with each other and we work together on building a transportation infrastructure that works for our region. We're already doing a lot of things kind of in this field, and we already partner with a lot of other cities on other things. And this is a, I think, a good opportunity for us to plug in with a larger conversation, to learn from our neighboring cities and from the county, to have that resource available for us if we want to look at green energy initiatives or, or green house, or green building initiatives down the road. And so I would encourage my colleagues as we come towards budgeting decisions later this year. I'd encourage you guys to think this over a bit. I'm going to, at some point, ask that this be included in the budget and ask for your votes one way or the other on it. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Just for clarification, this is a staff commitment, more so than the elected's commitment?
Yes. So the elected officials, yeah, come together once or twice a year. And then it's more, we have a then it's more we have a staff working team.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just follow up on that. So would you expect city staff to go to those meetings? Kenmore city staff?
Yeah, so it's typically, it's often city planner, larger cities if they have a sustainability director, it'll be them. But, you know, people send usually just one staff person to those meetings.
And where are your meetings?
We rotate locations around, and we always have a call-in option too, to save on travel time if people don't want to make it like it's too far away for them.
And if we miss a meeting, it's not the end of the world?
No. We do, so the ILA, the cities make their contributions, we have a shared pot of money, we have a very democratic process for figuring out how we spend that shared pot of money. We do have votes on it, and our ILA is pretty specific about how many votes, so we follow up with people and make sure we get their vote. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We try to keep it as painless as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Northeast Side Mobility Project update. Grace Carlson, Transit Service Planner.
I do have your map on you.
Yeah.
Outside of the presentation right here, if you need it.
Oh, no, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay.
Good evening, thanks for having me. And it seems like it's a fitting subject to dovetail with a topic at hand with sustainability and climate change and strategic actions that Kenmore and other cities in King County are working together to try to combat. I'd like to give you an update tonight on a project that is a transit project that's specific to your area, the Northeast Side Mobility Project. And I'm going to walk you through this in three parts. The first part, I'm going to describe the current project that's underway this year. The second part, I will describe how a SR 520 restructure project that was underway last year has informed this project and how it is also being carried forward with this year's project. And the third part, I will talk about some external conditions that will have an impact or bearing on this project and its outcomes. So the project in a nutshell is, we have, I was just looking at the 234 and the 244, routes 234 and 244 that serve Kenmore. You'll notice when you look at the map that Kelly has provided to you as a separate attachment, and also will show up here a little bit later in my presentation, that the primary orientation of the mobility services that we're looking at in this region are north to south. And I realize that you have east-west transit services that go over the lake and either go up towards North Gate and Shoreline and so forth, or go south across and then south, further south. But this study is particularly interested in looking at how we can improve local connectivity, local connections, to help people get to the destinations that they desire the most. And if you take the all-day route here, the 234, it runs, the span of service runs from about 6:00 in the morning till about 9:00 at night with 30-minute headways. And it primarily takes riders from Kenmore to Bellevue Transit Center, and it is quite a circuitous route. So I would, I don't even want to hazard a guess tonight how long it might take if you got on at the Kenmore Park and Ride, that it would take you to get to the Bellevue Transit Center. But I'm sure that if you had a vehicle and you chose to drive, you could probably do it in a more expedient manner. Then you have the peak route, the 244, that runs for about two hours in the AM, heading from Kenmore Park and Ride to Overlake, and about two hours in the PM, coming back in the other direction. So to say that you're in need of more service, more frequent connections, better connectivity, I think that, you know, just those two routes really stand out as examples of where there's definitely room for improvement. I know that you all participated when King County Metro was working on our long-range vision called Metro Connects. And I'm very happy to tell you that this particular project, if it is approved and goes through the process, will be the first area that's eligible for Metro Connects investments. And this is a very incremental process. I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, but Metro Connects, as you know, has a 2025 implementation horizon, a 2040 implementation horizon. And I'm looking at doing implementation with this project in September of 2019. So we're going to take steps and try to move this network and move this system so that it can start being ready to integrate with more upgraded technology in the future. I would be remiss if I didn't also point out and mention that we're working with Sound Transit and WashDOT on the BRT across 522 and the BRT on 405. And there's also a rapid ride line that's coming online in 2023 between East Gate and Totem Lake. And so these, the routes that are part of this map will be integrating with those future transit technology improvements. So that's really, in a nutshell, what this year's Northeast Side Mobility Project is attempting to do.
Before you leave that slide, will you take questions before you want to wait till the end?
No, it's fine, please.
If you can go back to that slide.
Yep.
That last one, about redirecting 20, well, 255 in particular, but I think there's other ones involved, to the University District.
Yeah.
Is that because of the One Center City project downtown?
Well, that, the question that you're getting to is actually the second part. I've told you about the first part, which is telling you about the project. Last year, Sound Transit and Metro worked together to look at the routes that came across Lake Washington, going east or west, and considered and asked the public to consider reorienting those routes to go to the Link Light Rail Station at U-Dub. I mean, that's a major regional investment in regional transportation. And because, as you point out, there was, we were going to be reaching the period of maximum constraint in downtown Seattle with so many different construction projects all converging at the same time, in the interest of rider reliability and frequency, you know, we thought getting people into the light rail would be a way that they could get more reliable transportation if they're trying to get into downtown Seattle. And it was very interesting, while we heard a lot of positive feedback about that idea, there were also some very significant and valuable concerns that were weighed then at that time. One, at the Montlake Triangle, at the transfer area at U-Dub at Link Light Rail Station, was that people were concerned about safety of getting off the buses and crossing two busy roads to get to the Light Rail Station, that with inclement weather, it would make it difficult. If you had any kind of mobility issues yourself, you know, how much more time would it add to your travel, you know, to make that transfer happen? So, and the second area of concern was that if you wanted to keep freight and transit moving, then it made sense to improve and optimize the downtown grid for transit. And so both of those areas of concern, the study team took to heart. And we went back, Metro went back with Seattle Department of Transportation and Sound Transit to look at where we could make transit optimization improvements in the downtown area, but also where we could improve the safety, convenience, inviting environment, accessibility at the U-Dub Link Light Rail Station. And so the partners in the Montlake Triangle area not only involve Metro and Sound Transit, but also WashDOT and the University of Washington and SDOT. So we've been working and trying to develop the grid in downtown to be more transit compatible, and we've also been working with U-Dub and Sound Transit to make the light rail area. And those projects are underway with an implementation horizon of September 2019, so that they would coordinate with any structure, service structure changes that we're talking about in this year's project. Now, the second part of your question was about other routes, other than the 255. And there was, there were quite a number of routes that Sound Transit and Metro were looking at. Taking into account the legitimate concerns for safety, we have determined that of all the routes and Sound Transit's included, we would look at potentially redirecting the 255 to U-Dub in September of 2019. But that's a big if, and I want to make my point that there's no decisions that have been made. In fact, that's the process that I'm going through right now with people in your community and these other communities in the Northeast Side, is to say, if the 255 were to transfer, and we were able to save the service hours that we're using now to bring it into downtown Seattle, how can we envision reinvesting those savings into this local network? And that's also where, when I mentioned Metro Connects, that would be an additional investment that we would put into this local network. And then we would be, based on our budget assumptions, be able to also harvest some additional savings that we could put into this, into this area. So last year's study yielded a lot of valuable information that we're using in this study, but we really are looking at how can we improve the local connectivity and the mobility of folks in your area. And it would be implemented in September 2019. So that gives you a snapshot of where we are today, and where we were last year, and how that's informing where we are. Before I move into the third part of my presentation, are there any comments or questions?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. So there are some always external conditions of note. You mentioned that Snohomish County or Snohomish County is making an impact here in Kenmore. Transportation service planning is no different. We're affected by external conditions that don't seem to be within our control always. So WashDOT informed us earlier this year that as part of their Rest of the West construction of SR 520, they are going to be closing the Montlake Freeway stations on 520 at the end of March of 2019. They are doing this for safety reasons, and I don't know if they've come and spoken with any of you yet about these plans, but they're going to build a lid on that end of the bridge, and there will be stops that will be placed there, but they're going to be five or six years away on the construction timeline. So this is creating a lot of understandable anxiety for our riders that are coming from the east side and needing to get into the U District because that Montlake Freeway Station between Sound Transit and Metro service serves about 700 riders boarding and alighting every day. And right now, the only option that we have to offer folks, and we're still working on developing some additional options, is to have folks transfer, again, the one-seat ride that you mentioned, having folks transfer Evergreen Point to some, either 271, Metro's 271, or some Sound Transit Express routes that come across the lake and go into the University District. You may or may not be aware that the downtown transit tunnel will be closing to bus operations at as early as the end of March. We, the developers that are, the contractors that are doing the construction for the light rail expansion have to have all their permitting finished and complete by the end of this month. And if that is, if all their paperwork is in order, then the transit tunnel could close to bus operations as early as March of 2019. So when you take an example like the Route 255, it currently comes across the lake, comes down I-5, gets off at Stewart and Yale, and then it makes its way into the downtown transit tunnel at the Convention Place Station, and is able to navigate all the way through downtown without having to be bothered by anything happening on the surface streets. So this is something that I've been taking into consideration with my peers of how can we keep the bus service reliable into downtown Seattle while those transit optimization improvements are still underway? Let's see. If I got any more bad news I can share with you. I don't think so. I think with that, I will open it up for any further questions or comments.
Any other questions? I noticed in looking over the map, I don't see anything on the 312, the 522, or the 372, I believe it is. So you're not planning anything with those. Those will continue on into One Center City and continuing their routes as they always have?
They are always available for incremental improvements during service changes. And when the 522 BRT, as that continues to advance, we'll be looking at better integration with that, to get people where they want to go.
Right, but we're not talking about any other shifts to the university with those other routes?
Oh, no, sir, not at all. Yeah. Thanks for letting me clarify that. All right?
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on our agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. And we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and there will be a timer on the screen behind me. Clerk, please call first person.
Matthew Bustad.
At the podium.
I just want to express my opposition to the plastic bag ban, saying it may increase global warming because it uses more energy. It's, all waste is not dumped in the ocean, so it's not that ocean blob.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat, pitch your name and where?
Matthew Bustad.
Matthew Bustad, and where do you live?
On 80th.
In Kenmore?
Yes. So it could increase global warming. Waste here is not dumped in the ocean like it is in some places, so it's not part of that plastic blob. Takes away choice from consumers. Adds another small, yet small, another cut, another small thing on the back of businesses, is an unnecessary law. Customers already can take their own bags if they want to use disposable or reusable bags. And I noticed in your thing here, it says something about highlighting Kenmore's working business climate, and that goes against this. You know, I live on 80th, so I'm halfway between this Safeway and the one in Bothell. So, you know, customers who can make their choice where they want to go. Already, I don't go to a lot of places that don't have bags, it's so inconvenient. And I use the bags. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustad.
John Adamski.
Thanks for hearing me. My name is John Adamski. I live at 5906 Arrowhead in Kenmore, and I'm a longtime Kenmore resident, 50 years this month. I want to say a few words about the Economic Development Plan item that relates to the water taxi. And I can say that I'm a boater, I've always been a power boater and a sail boater, and recently, I have a lot of paddleboards and windsurfers in my collection. My concerns about the water taxi are twofold. One, about the wakes, and two, about the economic feasibility of the water taxi. First, on the wakes, I think the wake issue, which, of course, you know, was a very, very serious problem over in Rich Passage, when the, you know, the foot ferry first went into Rich Passage, the water erosion, the water, you know, the wakes eroded the banks heavily over there, and they had to, they ended up selling those water ferries and getting new ones. And this new Rich Passage One taxi is more efficient, has a smaller wake, but the boat has proven to be very expensive and very unreliable. And I actually, I kind of worry about the wakes here in Lake Washington, where the shores are much more shallow than they are in Rich Passage, because, you know, we're not a tidal zone. And I have kids and grandkids that use our shallow beach, and, you know, I'd like to make sure that it's safe for them to do that. Secondly, on the economic issue, the foot ferry study that was done in late 2015 shows that these foot ferries are extremely expensive. The estimate in the 2015 study showed that for every passenger that had got on in Kenmore, there'd have to be almost a $30 per-passenger subsidy for each trip. That seems a little excessive to me, you know, in addition to the cost of buying a very expensive ferry and modifying the docks here and at Lake Washington. So I have two asks. One, if you could please, you know, let the people in on the details for any test of a water ferry here, so we can be on the water and watch, you know, to see the wakes, and, you know, assess them ourselves, and it lets you know what we think about it. Number two, let the people in on the details of the economic impact on which will undoubtedly come out of their taxes in some kind of a public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adamski.
Elizabeth Berg.
I'm Elizabeth Berg. I'm a Kenmore resident, and I'm here to express my displeasure over the letter that myself and our neighbors received on Friday about your plans to turn a residential piece of property into your public works garage. We are extremely displeased that any of you think that this is a good idea. I think this is a poor reflection of you and of your planning. The police department and the fire station sat vacant for how many years? No answer? You guys don't respond? Okay. So, I think it's a really valid point, that you have two pieces of property that belong to the city, and you have leased them out, and now you want to take a parcel of land that is zoned residential and convert it into a public use property. Have any of you been to that property, besides Rob? Because Rob was over on Friday. I'm going to take that as a no. If you were, you would know that it's a beautiful piece of wooded land. My property is right next door, and it's also a beautiful piece of property that's fully wooded, that has swamp creep that goes through the back. I do not want a public garage next door with increased traffic that's going to bring noise pollution, water pollution possibly because of Swamp Creek, and most importantly, air pollution, especially during the summer months, when, per Rob's letter, it says that you will have an increase because of your seasonal workers. I work from home. I don't want to listen to that. I don't want to look at it. We bought our property because we wanted peace and quiet. We love Kenmore. My husband grew up in Kenmore. He's a lifelong resident. And you, with your plan to do this, are ruining the integrity of our neighborhood. Just let, please, like, think about that. My neighbors and I talked about this over the weekend, the few that I could actually see, but you had your chance. You have the fire department that you easily could have converted into a public works garage. Rob mentioned that this property is attractive because it's large and flat. You have two large, flat parking lots that you could have used. Your lack of planning is not going to negatively impact my neighborhood. We will organize, and we will fight you on this.
Thank you, Ms. Berg.
Court Olson.
My name's Court Olson. I do not live in Kenmore, regrettably. I'm here as a proxy for someone who does, Vicki Graylin, who unfortunately was out of town this week, so she could not attend, but asked me to speak on her behalf. I'm a resident of Bellevue, 15817 Southeast 26th Street in Bellevue. And I'm also a member of a group that Vicki belongs to, People for Climate Action, relatively new grassroots group that has recently formed mostly in east side cities for the moment, but we're growing and hope to spread over to the Seattle side of the pond soon. Just want to reinforce the encouragement that King County folks have brought to you tonight, to join the rest of, nearly all of the rest of the east side cities, in participating in the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. Seventy percent of the greenhouse gas emissions in the United States come from our cities. That's a Department of Energy, Federal Department of Energy statistic. So, cities are responsible for a lot of our greenhouse gas emissions, and our climate change impacts are a direct result of those emissions. So, it's time for cities to step up and do what they can, and there are quite a few things that cities can do. If you're not aware of what cities might be able to do, and I imagine most of you aren't, a lot of people are not, I encourage you to go to a relatively new book, came out last year by former mayor, Republican mayor of New York City, Michael Blumberg. It's called Climate of Hope. We've given copies of this book to each of our city council members in Bellevue. You might want to check it out at the library and just scan through it to see what cities can do. Also, that same, Michael Blumberg, has a philanthropy organization that just last month announced that they are pledging 20, $72 million to 20 different cities across the US that come up with the best climate action plans to help them implement those plans. So, he's putting his philanthropy money behind the words in his book and making it more and more important to cities. Unfortunately, Kenmore, Bellevue, all the other east side cities aren't eligible for that, but Seattle is, and part of the contest criteria is having a regional plan, so that's what K4C does. My time's just about out, but I hope you'll realize there's an advantage to gathering together with other cities and making a collective effort to fight these greenhouse gas emissions, which we can control if we work together. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, if I can get you to please, you can come up and speak, not a problem, but you need to go over and sign up when you're done.
I want to speak very briefly. I'm actually also a resident of Bellevue.
Your name and where you're from?
Oh, my name is Jennifer Keller.
Jennifer?
Keller.
Keller.
And I live at 11514.
I don't need your address.
Okay. And I'm a Bellevue resident. I just want to speak extremely briefly, because to me, climate is such this big issue, and it seems like it's hard to get one's arms around it. And I guess I'm speaking as a resident of King County, that I'm just really appreciative that this presentation was here, and that we have K4C. And the wonderful thing about K4C is it helps make that translation from this big issue to what can a city in King County do to respond? And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keller. And if you please go sign. Okay, sir?
So, Richard Lipsky.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Richard Lipsky. I live in Kenmore, have for 27 years, and live near Loggloom Park. I'm proud to have lived here this long, and what would make me even prouder would be for it to see my city participate in the K4C effort for, for not only trying to prevent some of the progress of climate change, but for mitigating the damage that happens along the way. As a retired physician, the biggest and earliest payoff for these climate change mitigation efforts is basically to get carbon and other, in particular matter, things that fossil fuels take out of the ground and just put into the air to start putting the lid on those. And the, it takes a village to do this. I think it was pointed out earlier, you say, what can one city do? But we already know that cities and counties who decide that using their land for building more fossil fuel infrastructure is a bad idea, not just looking 20, 30, 40, 50 years ahead, but looking at the health of children in 10, 20, 30, 40 years. So, it's a win-win, and I urge you to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lipsky.
Chris Eastland.
Thank you. My name's Chris Eastland, live in Kenmore. I just wanted to ask a question and maybe make a recommendation. Recently bought an electric car, so I can do my part to help with climate change. But I noticed, I have this app that shows all the charging stations in the area, and there's this big sort of empty triangle here. Kenmore doesn't seem to have any. So, I just wonder if that's something we can do, make plans to install some electric charging stations in this area. Bothell City Hall has one. You can go park in the city hall, get free charging while you go to Menemans to have a drink. It seems like that would be nice to have around here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eastland.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, I'll declare public comment to be closed. Let's hear it. Mr. Bustad, thank you for your comments on plastic bags. Mr. Adamski, I certainly appreciate your comments on the water taxi. Please be assured that there will be plenty of opportunities for public to know what's going on. And as far as taxing goes, you're already paying, there's two or three cents a ferry district in your property taxes from the county. So, that's already being done, and has been for a number of years now. But the fare box return on water taxis is close to 40%, where fare box return for buses is closer to 28%. And these are pretty well-established numbers, so just putting that out there. Ms. Berg, thank you for your comments, but there's a clarification that needs to be issued. We do not own the fire station. That is the fire department. They're a separate taxing entity. And we do not own the police station. We contract with King County Police Services, and King County owns that building. So, the city of Kenmore does not own either one of those, and we never have. But we certainly appreciate your comments, and I'm very familiar with the property because Jerry is a friend of mine. So, thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Olson, and Ms. Keller, and Mr. Lipsky, thank you very much for your comments on K4C. It's something that we're going to be considering later in the year as the budget comes up. And Mr. Eastland, stick around. Car chargers are planned. We've got one in the works now, and hopefully, there'll be more than one. But yes, thank you very much for your comments. All right. With that, let me wake my computer up. So, next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
And I'll second, although, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the business agenda, Economic Development Strategy Update, Proposed Goals and Strategy Actions. Ms. Alse, your name is not here, but I knew it was you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are your mystery guests tonight, and mystery presenters. I'm Nancy Alseley, the Assistant City Manager, and I'm joined by Mark Goodman from Community Attributes Incorporated. And he spent some time presenting some very interesting demographic and market condition information to you two, three weeks ago. Tonight, we have before you the proposed goals, strategies, and actions for the updated Economic Development Strategy, which we look forward to going through with you, and hopefully see your comments, questions, and action ultimately. Before we get to that, though, I wanted to spend a little bit of time reviewing some highlights of how the 2009 Economic Development Strategy has been implemented over the past several years. And this document was adopted in June of 2009, about a year before this city hall building was completed. So, some time has gone by, and we've noted also that the council, since that time of the plan being adopted, has included implementing the Economic Development Strategy in your top goals each year since, and has followed through with approving investments about, that help us put that plan into action. So, I'm just going to run through some slides here and talk a bit about the, kind of some of the main goals that were in that 2009 strategy, and some examples of how they've been implemented. So, the first goal was promoting Kenmore's image. And so, as you can see, we've invested in marketing and media relations over that time. It's turned out pretty well in terms of coverage in local and regional media, and it's had a chance to update the website during the period of time that the plan has been in effect. The plan also called for enhancing community events and making those better known throughout the region, and so that has certainly happened. And notably, it talked about also investing in the city's parks and open space assets, because that is something that sets us apart from a lot of other cities. And the council and the community have really put their weight behind the very significant open space and parks improvements. At the bottom, on each slide that you see, I've noted, from the 2009 plan, some items that were labeled as longer-term efforts. And so, marketing and promotion and keeping Kenmore's profile front and center is not a sprint, it's a marathon. And so, you'll be seeing more information about that for the updated plan. So, here are some examples. You know, a very recent improvement of Morelands Park that also features some of the wayfinding signage. That was one of the very first things that the city did to implement the 2009 strategy. And then also, really, really positive coverage and example from the Seattle Times, talking about the downtown redevelopment. And what we don't see here is an article that I certainly heard a lot about in my travels as I talk to people, and that was the Crosscut article about our mayor and his Uber driving. So, sorry, he's not at the dais right now to hear that, but that generated a lot of The next, next main goal was supporting existing businesses and pursue opportunities to expand employment. As you heard two, three weeks ago, we're right about at the same amount of Kenmore residents who actually also work in Kenmore. It's only about 3%. So, we're interested in expanding employment. So, here are some things that were called for in the plan, and I won't talk about every single one, but my coworkers know that the second bullet, an organizational culture supportive of economic development, is something they hear from me a lot, that every single person in our organization, from the council, through the city manager, to the reception, to the maintenance staff, to our finance staff, who help us maintain a AAA bond rating, everyone plays a role in economic development in our organization. And so, I think that is something that people take pride in quite a lot. The, having a business association was also called for in the plan, and of course, we've had the Kenmore Business Alliance for several years, and it keeps growing. And to the point of the recent rename of the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce to the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, so really great energy there, and I'm pleased to see Carl Michaelman in the chambers tonight, who is the chair of the Kenmore Business Alliance. And then various other actions along the way that speak directly to the goals that were in this part of the plan. In italics, you'll see three things that weren't necessarily called out in the plan, but opportunities came up along the way to do them. When... When council approved business registration in 2013, there was a lot of interest on the part of the council of having some sort of online business directory, that businesses who were registered could opt in for. And so, the FindKenmore.org has been really, really popular, both with businesses who are listed, and then people looking to buy local and support local businesses. The Kenmore Business Incubator was not mentioned, or anything quite like it was not mentioned in the 2009 plan, but opportunities came forward a few years later. And so, that has grown and served tens of businesses, or over 40 or 50 businesses. And we're going to be back at council in a few weeks to give you a report on the incubator. And in the 2009 plan, there was another longer-term goal, is to maintain the opportunity for longer-term office-based employment. And you're going to be hearing from Mark about some ways that we could be continuing to work on that. So here are a couple of examples. The 2009 plan talked about, think about encouraging some craft brewers or winemakers to locate in Kenmore that would have access to the Burke-Gilman Trail. And we not only have one, but we have three at this point. And this also is an example of the wayfinding that helps people understand, yep, you're in Kenmore now, and by the way, there are some cool craft brewers close by. And then here are some other examples of those things for supporting local businesses. The next main goal, create a vibrant, walkable downtown. This has been a huge undertaking by the city, and I think we'd all agree that downtown has gotten more vibrant, more walkable in many ways, and through really smart investments and partnerships. What was in the 2009 plan is a couple of things that you're going to see in the update, is this push to connect downtown and the waterfront and Burke-Gilman Trail. And what about calling attention to that main intersection of 68th and 522 as well? And here's some great examples of what have made a big difference, we see right across the street now, and how people are enjoying it. And the final goal was advance the community's connection to the waterfront, and all kinds of public investments, voter approval for the walkways and waterways, and the grassroots organizations that have come forward to help offer water sports activities. Pursuing passenger ferry service was in the 2009 plan, where we continue to keep involved in those discussions at the regional level. And of course, we continue to work on Lake Point. And again, you're going to see in the update, improving linkages to the waterfront, which was also mentioned in 2009. And so, here is a great example of waterfront activities that are available to many, many people in the community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to roll through the goals and strategies and some of the actions that we're proposing for your consideration.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm glad to be back here again. I think it's been just around a month since I last saw you. Nancy's going to pull up pretty much what you have in front of you today, which is what we're calling our worksheet format. It's a simpler version of our proposed strategy for the city. I'll make this full screen here.
Turn it over to you at this point?
Yep. It's the way I've organized this, you'll see that all the strategies are nested under the goals we discussed at my last meeting with you. And they're really rooted in what we've learned, not just from the analysis we've done and the profiling of the community, and also looking at your previous plan and what you've accomplished and what's still applicable today. It's also really rooted in what we learned from our interviews, attending a Kenmore Business Alliance meeting, speaking with some of you, and hearing from you. So it's also heavily influenced by our interaction with staff as well, and kind of the workshopping we've done with them. It's still a draft, and we're here today to get your thoughts. And I guess I would frame it by saying, I'll walk through each goal and read through each strategy. And all the actions we have nested in there, I won't read each one, but I would ask of you each to tell me what's missing, what questions do you have, and what clarifications do you have. And I'll try to move us fairly quickly. I know there's quite a few. There's 17 total strategies, so.
And again, this, just like the 2009 plan, it's just meant to be a guidebook, more or less, to focus city efforts. It's not the last word. We'll also be very conscious of opportunities that come up along the way. And of course, ultimately, it's the council's decision about, you know, what kind of investments are made by the city in implementing actions.
Thanks. So these are the goals we visited, and they've intrigued a little bit, included a little bit of feedback that we heard at our last meeting. And just to remind you, these are built off of your goals from 2009, so some of this might seem familiar. We tried to leverage that as much as possible. There's a lot of good content, and we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We've moved from four total goals to six total goals, and added some specificity around a few topic areas that we felt were important, based on what we'd been learning. And this is how everything's organized in terms of strategy. This is all the strategies we've developed, 17 in total. And these are strategies that we recommend for the city to pursue, to achieve the goals we've outlined. And under each strategy are several actions, with some strategies with more actions than others. And the actions are specific, and there are quite a few for consideration by the city. And just to emphasize what Nancy was saying, these are recommendations. These are ideas that the city can pursue. And it doesn't mean the city's limited to them, or that they've adopted these as formal actions that they have to take. These are ideas and opportunities that can help guide city staff, city investment, city pursuits. If there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and start diving into some of these. My PowerPoint reflects what you have in front of you, so I'll work through each goal, starting with the first goal, which is promote and differentiate Kenmore's image. And our three strategies for this are beautify and activate Kenmore's front door, the 522 corridor, develop a signature marketing campaign for Kenmore rooted in its unique assets and identity, continue to expand and strengthen events and activities programming to attract visitors to Kenmore. And we've got quite a few actions nested under this. I won't walk through all of them, but I did want to highlight, under 1.8.3, we've included some specific examples of ideas where other cities, how they're achieving this, or how they're approaching this. We think that even today, as I was driving through, you're doing a lot of these things. We think that this adds some specificity on how you might pursue some of these differentiators and promotional efforts for the city. It also provides you leverage and ammunition as you move forward with these kinds of efforts and consider new versions of them, that you have a plan that would support that. So any questions about this goal or the strategies we have listed? Any thoughts?
No question.
Councilor Shrubnik?
Just a couple of quick ones. I was curious, 1A1 actually had mention of billboard removal. I was curious about how that works, or phasing those out. And then, just a comment on 1A6. I mean, I'm definitely for connecting across 522, and I know we're pursuing a study. I also agree that we need to highlight our downtown intersection, and make that an amenity, which I think we are going to do with the bridge replacement. But I'm just, I want us to continue to pay attention to the relationship of those two things. So the billboard removal is the only question.
Sure, sure. The idea behind billboard removal, it's a challenging effort to make in terms of how it's done, and the consolidation or removal of those privately-owned billboards. But the idea is that they are something that can detract or take away from the feel or look or quality of an urban corridor, a highway corridor. And it's something that we recognized through other city efforts and other regional efforts, to try to limit those, basically. And that was the idea behind that. And if it's something that the City of Kenmore would want to pursue in the long term, it's obviously a challenging one in terms of how you go about it. There's probably different angles, I would say. But that was the idea. And that if there are opportunities for that, this plan could support that. So that was the general thinking. And then you were emphasizing, when we're talking about an overpass or underpass, is to make sure we're emphasizing the city's main intersection with 522. Is that?
Yeah, just to keep in mind.
Yeah, keep that in mind. Absolutely.
I think you'll see that later.
What, Councilor Vadenuski?
Yeah, I'm going to just use 1A4 as kind of an example. So I get that this is a guidebook, but I was noticing what seems to be maybe conflicting goals and strategies. There was, you know, infill development, including surface parking lots, and then later, there's adding on-street parking, which you may not need to do if you didn't take away the parking lots. And then later on, there's pop-up retail events in parking lots. So there's a lot of things that kind of, I understand it's a guide, but I was noticing that.
Understood. See them either as an opportunity or...
I guess when we talk about implementing, we should talk about how they all play and pros and cons of things like that.
One thing that might help with that is, we're going to be adding some terminology around each one of these, to say, is it short-term, is it long-term? Where some of the more short-term ideas for surface parking lots, interim activities, food carts, that kind of thing, I would consider interim uses. Whereas, full-on infill development would be kind of that long-term vision for those parking lots.
Yeah, that would be helpful to...
Yeah, that might help provide some clarification.
What do we really want to do with parking lots?
Yeah. And we certainly don't mean to imply that, parking came through loud and clear to us, both through our outreach with businesses and the public, is a major challenge now and into the future to tackle and make sure the city stays on top of it and in front of it. So I definitely recognize that the surface parking lots are a critical component of that. And so, the way we view parking is it's, there's a lot of different angles to approach it. This plan and our recommendations around surface parking lots as a long-term use in a downtown, and thinking long-term, those aren't typically the highest investor use on a property. And they often offer some form of opportunity in the long term for development or new activity. But parking would be something that would be critical that would have to be addressed for those to turn over and make sense.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick clarification. So, in the agenda item, it says that the proposed council action is to approve goals, strategies, and actions. But you just spoke to expanding on what each of these strategies are with a sense or two of a short and long term. So what are we doing tonight? What's the expectation for tonight?
I think for me, the goals themselves, the strategies, the language won't change at all. It would be some implementation component to say, are these short-term or long-term, to provide our recommendation or potential timing. The substantive nature of the content of these wouldn't change. It would just provide a little more guidance for the fully laid-out plan that we'll have in front of you as a full strategy. So it wouldn't be any substantive changes to this content, beyond what I'm hearing right now in terms of comments.
Thank you.
And that's exactly the kind of thing that we'd be back at council, talking about work plans at some point, about, you know, is this something that we want to tackle first, second, third, or way down the line?
Councilor Marshall?
Somewhere in there, we've got to recognize the support of hundreds of members of the public and our heritage and past with a public pool. So whether it's in Kenmore, or just near the edge, perhaps by the new property in the City of Bothell at Wayne Golf Course, somewhere in there, let's try to get momentum for a public pool so that our kids can learn how to swim and be able to enjoy all our great waterfront amenities.
Anybody else?
And we could certainly return back to this goal if we want. I'll keep moving forward. But if we want to revisit any of these, I'm happy to. So Goal 2 is grow new and existing businesses in target sectors. This is a similar goal to what was in your 2009 plan. Oh, thank you. The strategies around this are Strategy 2A, grow community-scale retail and services in Kenmore in conjunction with larger-scale recruitment efforts. Strategy 2B, leverage outdoor recreation and other assets to grow tourism in Kenmore. Strategy 2C, leverage Basteer University's health and wellness programs to attract synergistic businesses and retain graduates. Strategy 2D, actively engage and recruit regional employers to Kenmore. And so, this is really centered around business recruitment, retention, and around both smaller-scale recruitment efforts to larger-scale regional efforts and bringing regional employers and the like to Kenmore. So that's kind of where we landed with this one. It's building off of a lot of what was in your 2009 plan, but adding a little specificity around how this might be accomplished. Any questions around this Goal 2? Happy to take in your feedback.
Councilor Shrubnik?
I have quite a few questions for, mostly related to 2B. I'm, of course, very excited to see this and really appreciate the emphasis on the kind of nexus between health and wellness and recreation.
Yeah.
I do think that is something that we have uniquely here, as well as natural and active parks. So I'm curious, I mean, this is a larger question, how to attract consistent critical mass in the city to activate spaces, and kind of beyond the pop-up idea. I mean, I like pop-ups. They're fun, but they don't breed kind of that consistent activation. So that's one. And then, another question is, I was curious, 2B2 talks about sporting events at St. Ed's. I'm curious what that is. There's considerable discussion in this goal, as well as others, around recreation. And I do feel like, and I mentioned this in the budget retreat as well, that I think it's difficult to say we're promoting these things and to really embrace them without dedicating some resources to that. So I, we're the only city of our, anywhere near our size, that doesn't have recreation coordination staff, rec staff. You look at a website and you see a city, and it says parks and recreation. We have parks. And, you know, recreation is on the shoulders of volunteers at this point, which is very difficult to maintain. So I just wanted to say that. I also think we need to underscore the connections, and we do in some parts of the document and not others, between St. Ed's, and then across the waterfront parks, Rhodey Squires and Log Boom to downtown. It's almost like a T. And some of those connections are there, and some are being improved. And the water walk aspect is kind of indeterminate at this point. So it is discussed, but I think we need to discuss that in more than just one of these objectives. It really is, you know, how do we make those connections, even in the absence of land acquisition? On 2B3, I know this is a laundry list, I'm almost done. On 2B3, it'd be great to add boating and swimming as activities as well. 2B8, there was mention of partnerships with, I think it's U-Dub, I'd have to look back, but kind of out-of-area entities, who are certainly strong. But I'm curious, there's no mention, really, in the document at all, of our own Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center, and what it provides, and how to bolster that, as well as Salsan Point, which was started by a resident that lives right on our border. So that, you know, those are significant recreation providers with a more local connection.
Right, good.
And then the last one on 2 is 2C7, we could think about the trail, not just for running, but also clearly for biking, and rollerblading, longboard as well. So there's lots of things that people do on that trail that I think we could really capitalize on.
Thank you.
Yeah, but don't forget the seniors. Yeah, but don't forget the seniors who have to walk that trail too and do it safely. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate all of this. I do need to express my opposition to the inclusion of, where'd it go? 2A4, consider pursuing an urban format, big-box anchor. I have a very strong belief that Kenmore does not need a big-box store. We have very successful small businesses, and I would hate to see a Target come in and essentially push Snap Doodle and Ostrom's and some other small businesses out of business. I understand there's a thought that the sales tax from a place like that could bolster our coffers quite a bit, but I also think it does so by possibly selling out our soul a little bit, and I'd rather not go down that route. Also, if you look at property tax, which is the other big thing that we get from businesses, property tax on a big-box store is much lower on a per-acre basis than you get from smaller footprint retail. So we would, there is a trade-off, and I'm not sure if we've really looked into the trade-off of large parking lots and large, single-use buildings compared to smaller format, more local retail. So I am strongly in opposition to 2A4, and will be moving when we get to final adoption to removing that.
You know, it's a great comment, and I too struggle with the term "big-box" and "urban format" because they don't seem to match. But increasingly, we are seeing some of those businesses that you associate with big and box that are going in with a much smaller format. And, Mark, there's one in Ballard.
I think that's the most cutting-edge example right now. You know, there's the downtown Target in Seattle, which was kind of innovative at its time when it went in, and Target's experimenting with even a smaller format, it's about 30,000 square feet or even less actually, in a new office building in Central Ballard off 15th Avenue. And they're putting it in anticipation of being on Rapid Ride and all that. And so it's interesting to see some of these formats, even Walmart and those kind of companies exploring different formats and how they adopt their, or expand their presence in some of these more urban environments.
No, I mean, it is interesting. I just, I personally don't feel it's a good fit for Kenmore in that whatever they do on some level cannibalize smaller, local businesses. I would rather see us try to be a little bit more unique and chase after smaller businesses like we've done with Berry Row and other things like that to grow that sector, so we have more Ostrom's and more Snap Doodles and businesses like that that kind of become part of the fabric of the community. Because Target, no matter how great their businesses they put here, well, you know, they don't care about Kenmore. At the end of the day, they care about profits, and they care about their shareholders, and that's their job. Whereas the local business here is invested here and has ties to Kenmore. I would much rather see us, I mean, I'm not, if somebody comes in here and it meets code and they're going to locate here, fine, but I would rather not see us spend city resources chasing down a small Target. I just think there's better ways for us to be doing our internal city economic development rather than chasing down large businesses to try to come here like that. I would rather see us focus on things that will make Kenmore even more unique and even more of a destination and more of a kind of hometown, rather than just another generic suburb that has a Target or has a Fred Meyers.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, that one, the word "big-box" sticks out, but I would say, and I appreciated both your comments because you addressed what I was going through in my mind, thinking about just this, there is an evolution of how the retailers are working right now. And so maybe there's a way to rephrase it that maybe isn't quite so, you know, negative by saying, having the term "big-box" anchor.
Yeah.
And I think that might be, because I think it's fair to say that, especially as traffic becomes more congested and everything, it's nice to have options, and if we were talking about increasing biking and walking and other means of mobility, then I think it also makes sense to try to have and look at what may be, you know, a little more cutting-edge, multi-service-type retailers. And so I would, I think I knew what you were trying to explain or get to, and so hopefully, I think the concept isn't necessarily bad, maybe just to, if we can rethink how it's...
Yeah. Some of your terminology was exactly what I was thinking, and maybe it's an idea of kind of being alert to the trends that are going on in retail and what is going to, what are some possibilities that would be a good fit for this community, but would still offer some variety, some choices, and not committing to anything other than, you know, just be on guard and keep track of what's going on in the industry. But we can definitely work on some of that.
Councilmember Januski?
Yeah, the "big-box" had me cringe a little bit as well, so rewording that would be great. I don't think we need to completely take the concept off the table, number one, because it says "consider." So until we have some kind of concept that we're really looking at, you know, I wouldn't want to just say no to everything right off the bat, but yeah, if we could reword that so it's, I don't know, "big-box" didn't really...
Yeah.
I would have just voted no for "big-box" as well without...
Right. Right.
2B7. I think we really ought to work with Kenmore Air and do as much as we can. They're such a class operation, and because they're known all over the world for the engine work they do and that, it's a tremendous and interesting tour that I've had the opportunity to go on three or four different times, and I'd go on it three or four more because I learned something new every time. You know, something like that could be worked out. I mean, that would be outstanding. So I like that one a lot.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. I'll keep moving. So Goal 3, enable high-quality retail office and mixed-use development. I'll walk through the strategies. Strategy 3A, maximize local feasibility for a Kenmore business incubator. I think this needs to be reworded to say "expansion" rather than in parentheses, "expanded." Shared office or co-working facilities and maker space. Strategy 3B, evaluate modifications to the city zoning code to enhance the environment for new and speculative office and commercial development. Strategy 3C, promote infill development and the reuse and redevelopment of Kenmore's underutilized properties. Strategy 3D...
We need to update the screen.
Oh, sorry. Caught up. Update plans and regulations to extend Kenmore Village success to other zones. And this is really where we're focused in on some of the city's development code, incentivization of different development typologies. I got a lot of feedback from the city staff on this one in particular. Happy to walk through any of these strategies or actions in more specificity.
One little question. What is form-based code?
Yeah, so it's something...
Frequent question. Smart cut.
The best person to explain it. It's a form of regulation. Your typical Euclidean zoning is about uses, and there'll be forms of hybrid form-based codes, but typically, as a code is set up, you'll call for what uses are allowed on that site, and you might call for ground-floor retail on the one floor in your downtown, for example, in mixed-use or residential typology above. Form-based code in its purest form is about the building form itself, so you develop a building envelope, and you dictate the exact form, how it sits, how it lies, and creates a street edge. It's rare to see a true form-based code, that's why we mentioned the word "hybrid," but it's really about having a strong code around how the buildings themselves are formed and interact with the street frontage and allowing more flexibility in the uses allowed in those areas.
How does that work with, I mean, I'm remembering now 18 years ago, but the design guidelines that were put into place with the downtown plan?
They don't necessarily conflict, and I think there are elements of, there are typically elements of form-based code in most design guidelines. So this is something we threw out there to say, is it worth reexamining that and taking on, maybe a stronger position on certain form-based code elements of your code, or thinking about the built form that you're allowing for or promoting through your code.
Sometimes it can help a city be more nimble...
Yeah. That's a good point.
...as opportunities come up, and maybe ones that weren't anticipated when regulations were put into place. So just a thought.
Yep.
Councilmember Smith?
I have a question on, let's see, let me get the right one here. All right. There it is. It's the 3C, Strategy 3C, and I'm curious how that would connect, or if you see it totally different than 1B4, which had to do with the, generate the suite of development opportunity maps. And do you see those, because this Strategy 3C says to promote infill development and the reuse and redevelopment of underutilized properties. I'm wondering if that's, if those two things are tied together in any way.
I would say they would be. I'd say, and we can even call that out in here. We tried to reference back because they're absolutely interconnected actions and strategies, so I think that'd be a good reference to make.
Okay.
The way we framed that task in our Goal 1 was more of a marketing component, and it's actually something we'll be working with the city on in the short term here to begin that process, but it is absolutely linked to how you're going to go out and actually promote some of these properties in these areas as a city in the long term.
And how would you do that?
In terms of the...
The actual process, actually looking, maybe this even more directly relates to 1B4, but I'm just curious how you see that. I remember years ago, we talked about creating maps that had these types of opportunities, but nothing really, never really went anywhere.
Sure.
And I'm just wondering if you can give me a high-level view of...
Well, I think it starts with the analysis we've just done, which is to really actually have, from a data-driven standpoint, have a clear understanding of what properties are vacant, perhaps underutilized based on what's allowed there from a zoning standpoint. And then the broad, you know, the high-level view is to have mapping and materials that the city can quickly point to, to say, these are their opportunity sites. And then there's steps further that the city can take in terms of acting as more of a facilitator and putting property owners in positions to better market their properties or be in directly in touch with potential site selectors for companies or retailers or the such, so...
Would the public or potential investors or buyers or developers, would they be able to, could they just look at it themselves, or you see it, would they have to actually talk to a city staff? Or they, or can they actually pull up the mapping themselves and review everything?
They could, and actually, we're going to be producing some materials that we could be using in marketing that show exactly, okay, here is where opportunities are based on zoning and current uses. So it's not an unusual type of tool to have in your toolbox, and this is one thing that we used some of the Port of Seattle grant money to work on.
Great.
And you'll see cities take, especially larger cities with more diverse areas in terms of size and scope on this, you know, have entire websites dedicated to this, so site selectors or investors can come and see what's available and have it be interactive along with actual sales data and such, so you can kind of go pretty far with it.
I like 3B myself. I love the graduated density zoning and certainly office density bonuses in these commercial zones. Any, anything we can do to encourage office development or more development and more density, I think, is really great, so I like those. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Moving on to Goal 4. Keep this up here. Goal 4 is leverage placemaking livability for economic development, and our two strategies are continue to leverage Kenmore's parks and open space amenities as an economic asset for residents and visitors alike. 4B is elevate and leverage placemaking and the design of the public realm as a primary driver of economic development. And these are two things the city's been doing well, and part of our motivation is to make sure that that continues to be at the forefront of your economic development work. I wholeheartedly believe, especially based on what the city's role is, a city's role is, placemaking and these kinds of assets from a livability standpoint are incredibly powerful, and they kind of, they stand the test of time in terms of being able to be an attraction for a city to get quality people and businesses here. Happy to answer any questions around these? Any specifics?
Councilmember Marshall?
Another great place, I think, for a public pool idea.
Yeah, I took note of that one.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
All right.
Keep us moving. Let's see here. Goal 5, expand connectivity, access to the waterfront, multi-modal transportation. We built on the last goal, from the last plan, a little bit to go from beyond just access to the water, but overall connectivity from your downtown to the water to 522 and think a little bit broader about it. So our two strategies are aggressively pursue improved linkages to the Lake Washington, some Amish River water fronts. Strategy 5B, leveraging, or leverage forthcoming park-and-ride and BRT transit extensions and the potential new passenger ferry investments to explore new modes of connectivity between Kenmore and the surrounding region. And that's really where we've nested a lot of some of the transportation efforts and specific actions we think the city should be thinking about, and there's a big change and shift in some of your transportation infrastructure that the city can be really leveraging and is already thinking about leveraging.
I mean, certainly acknowledge the comment from Mr. Adamski earlier this evening too with respect to passenger ferry.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yep, and on that, as you guys heard, his main, at least two of the main stated concerns tonight were public awareness and participation in the entire aspect of any such planning, if it occurs, and then test runs, if there are to be test runs, to measure impacts on Wake for property owners.
Yeah.
And all the, I suppose, I suppose all the different variations for hydrological and geological aspects of Lake Washington versus Puget Sound.
Yep.
Councilmember Shrubik?
I just want to reemphasize what I said earlier about the connections that comes up here again, and one thing that I did forget, which David reminded me of, is the additional point of Kenmore Air along that same strip. And again, even in the absence of property acquisition, I think there's some things we can do connecting the trail that runs along there with these sites and making that, you know, demarcating that. I mean, this is, this is the section that runs through Kenmore. We can do more than just have it be a passive King County throughway. I, I don't know, I'd like to see us use that amenity and connect it to our city parks and have that, you know, also, you know, point to our downtown and, you know, our town square. And so anyway, I think we could do more there.
Great.
All right.
Goal 6, highlight Kenmore's welcoming business climate. We heard a lot about both businesses and the public, a lot of positive feedback about working with the city. Oh, yes, sorry. And so our two strategies are to continue to review and improve transparency, efficiency, and consistency in city permitting and code compliance. And Strategy 6B, let's see, they're repeating, with partners broaden improved business development initiatives and climate in Kenmore. And we know there's a lot of good things underway on this, and these are some of the specifics we thought were worth mentioning as part of your plan, and business climate is always something the city, I would call that in the long-term category, it's something that's always going to be a work in progress, so it's a practice. So we wanted to make sure this was in the plan.
More questions? All right. Thank you. I guess if there's no more questions, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the goals and strategies, including the things that we have talked about tonight, to be included in the economic development strategy update.
Go moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I'd much rather actually see the final product before we're, you know, I know that we talked a lot-
Right.
-but I'd rather see the final product before voting to approve this or not.
We will, we will see the final product and approve that. This is just allow them to go forward. They're asking for this tonight to-
Right, but I-
-go forward to bring something back to us that included this.
Okay, I'm just not sure what direction specifically they've been given. I mean, we've talked about a lot of things, a lot of ideas have been thrown at them. I don't know what's sticking in there, what isn't.
So is it?
I mean, we're not adopting anything. If we're not adopting anything tonight, why do we have to go through a motion of approving something that we aren't seeing?
It sounds like, you know, definitely there, there were two or three policies and, and actions in particular that I can understand you'd, you'd want to see the, the final wording of it. So the one about big box, you know, cross out on, on that, and, and Mark and I have been taking good notes. So we could definitely get some language revisions, and if you wanted to have this on the next council meeting, either consent agenda or, or regular agenda, that would be fine.
Yeah, I was expecting that with the changes that we had been talking about tonight, that we would see it again after this was implemented, but this was just giving you the direction to go ahead and implement and the changes and that, and then bring it back to us for a final approval.
Okay.
That's what I was assuming.
That's fine.
I'm not sure I'm voting on.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Council, Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Schrebnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
All right.
Okay, and, and we're happy to be in touch with each and every one of you over the next few days as, as we work through this.
Yeah, we, you know, this, this sort of sets, sets the framework of that, and we want to make sure that it's, it's to all of our-
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is heavy manufacturing business regulations. Mr. Hampson, Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to discuss a proposed, proposed code change language with you and to receive some direction from you on how to move forward. The proposed code change was, as requested by you and from help from the city attorney's office, we put together some potential code language for amortizing out heavy manufacturing uses in the city. A little bit of background, heavy manufacturing uses are currently prohibited in every zone in the city. That means that there's no new heavy manufacturer uses can come on and start up, and existing heavy manufacturing businesses cannot expand. The existing heavy manufacturing uses are considered non-conforming, which means it wasn't conformance with the city's rules and regulations in, in effect at the time it was established, but no longer conforms to uses permitted in the current zoning code. Currently, nonconformances may be continued indefinitely unless it is discontinued for more than 12 months, and then it becomes, the status is forfeited. And once the nonconformance status is forfeited, the nonconformance shall not be or cannot be reestablished. As I am aware, there's only two or three nonconforming heavy manufacturing, heavy manufacturing businesses in the city. If we pursue an amortization ordinance for heavy manufacturing, there'd need to be a period long enough to amortize the asset or recoup the cost of the expenses. The potential or current proposed code language, we put in a 20-year amortization period with the possibility of a 10-year extension to allow the business to fully amortize if they prove that they, they aren't so amortized by that time. A little bit more background on heavy manufacturing uses in, in Kenmore. In nine, or just nineteen, in 2014, 2014, we revised the code to classify heavy manufacturing uses as nonconforming. So just as a reminder, nonconformance means any use improvement or, or structure established in nonconformance with the city rules and regulations in effect at the time the establishment that no longer conforms to the range of permitted uses in the site's current zone. In 2015, we passed a noise ordinance for heavy manufacturing businesses, and then also in 2015, we passed the business license requirements for heavy manufacturing. And so the agenda bill included some proposed or recommended code language if you were, wanted to pursue a amortization period for heavy manufacturing uses. So with that, I'll, I'm available to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
So I've got two quick questions. Have other cities done this?
Not that I'm aware of. In talking to the city attorney's office, I don't believe that there's any other cities in the, the state that have pursued an amortization for businesses. We have seen, and as you guys are aware, we've done an amortization for billboards, and so typically amortizations are tools that are used to amortize out signs, and so a lot of cities do use the amortization means and methods to get rid of or update the signs in their cities.
And then in here, there's an option for the city manager to extend time for a business to amortize their investments. I guess my question is, why would we, is the city manager the only option for that extension, or is that something that we could send to the city council as a land use decision? Or is that the only option to have the city manager approve?
So the, the timeframes, the 20 years and the 10-year time extensions are something that we came up with on our own, because like you said, or asked, there aren't any precedents for this type of code?
Right.
And so 20 years is, it was just a number that we particularly used. And so without knowing what the, the condition of the business is going to be within 20 years, we don't know if it's going to be fully amortized out. And so we thought that there'd be a good possibility to provide a clause, at least to extend it if there was proof that there wasn't, the business hasn't been amortized fully over that time. Now regarding who approves it, you know, that's really your guys' call, and if, if there's something that they wanted to have that come to the city council for approval, we can make those edits.
Are there any downsides that staff sees to going to the city council instead of being administrative?
I can't think of any.
Okay, I mean, I, I haven't made a decision either. I just, it's something that jumped out at me as I was reading the code, so, as I was reading the proposed language. Thanks.
Counselor Marshall?
Is anybody aware of what the card room ban was, whether that was a amortization or was it a simple ban? And then secondly, what sort of public process for this heavy manufacturing ordinance would you anticipate to consider bringing the idea of amortization to stakeholders and the public?
So the, the card room was before my time. I wasn't familiar with, but I do know that it wasn't an amortization method.
There was a definite end date.
There was an end date?
There was a definite end date, yes.
My recollection is there was an end date, but it was not amortized.
Right. Thank you. Public process.
The public process for this will involve a public hearing and then a council action. Also, there's going to be an environmental review, a SEPA review, and so there'd be an opportunity for public to comment through SEPA review.
Counselor Smith?
Thanks, Brian. I remember when I had done some research on this a couple of years ago, I was almost completely sure that there was precedent in the state and that there was actually an amortization on a nonconforming heavy manufacturing zoning thing. So I will actually see if I can find it, but when you said there wasn't, I was actually surprised because it seemed like there had been, and that was, I think, one of the reasons why we are also talking about it. As well as what Deputy Mayor brought up, I was thinking the same thing on the approval, and that was, I would like it, if it, if, if it's reasonable, I would like it to also come back to the council if we are going to adopt something and look at a, any type of a renewal period. I think, I think it's reasonable, and I think it's reasonable because many of the issues we've discussed over the last few years, the resources that we've put into on dealing with these nonconforming uses, and we've spent immense amount of staff time, we've had disagreements on what is considered a nonconforming use and what isn't, and how they've been documented by the, the businesses. And I just feel like, you know, it's, land use goes through phases, goes through development, it goes through different phases of, of use, and, and we have many different things that we've talked about that has to do with odors, we've been fought on things, we've dealt with noise issues, we had to create ordinances. These are all things that have already gone through a public process and that they have through comp plans, through the Planning Commission, and through how we get to our zoning and how something becomes nonconforming in the first place. And, and so I think these, I think it's reasonable, and I would, I would like to see us move forward with it.
Mayor Baker? Yeah, comment on Councilmember Smith's comments?
Yes, please.
In fact, I was going to make a comment after hearing Councilmember Herbig's question about whether other jurisdictions have imposed an amortization period. I worked on this issue with Councilmember Smith about two, two years ago, I believe, and I did research then. I did not put together this version of an ordinance amendment, but my recollection is that Snohomish County had an amortization period for a type of heavy industrial use as did Thurston County. I, I will resurrect those notes and get that information to the council.
Thank you for that addition.
Counselor Danuski?
So my question was going to be on how you figured out the, the timeframe, and you mentioned that it was kind of an arbitrary thing, so I guess I would ask that before something comes back, we really work with the heavy manufacturing businesses to see what's reasonable, and I'm sure that'll be part of the process, but I'd want to make sure it was.
Okay, I'll do.
All right, any other questions? You're not expecting action tonight, you're just wanting to know direction and discussion to the city manager, so.
Yeah, from what it sounds like, I'm hearing that you still want to pursue, pursue this.
Yeah, but I think I'm hearing brought back to council.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the staff report.
I have nothing.
Councilmember, reports, comments, and initiatives. Let's, let's go back the old ways. Councilmember Smith?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Councilmember Schrebnik?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
I'm going to go with the nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to add.
Hey, you guys make me the bad guy all the time.
Well, you make yourself the bad guy.
Well, I guess I do, I'm just too damned involved. Okay, there's been a lot of conversation tonight, and just so everybody knows, and we're all on the same page, there was a ferry demonstration done a few weeks ago. The, the city manager was with me, along with Representative Wydner and Associates, and one of the other council members was with me. It was using a hydrofoil, there's no wakes, up to 48 miles an hour on the lake, and the developer in South Lake Washington, the developer down in the old Boeing property with Hyatt Regents, you know, that is implementing the ferry in 19, I think it's supposed to go into effect. So there is move to do that, and it does have, he's very confident it's, has going to have a very high rate of return, you know, fair box recovery, so, and he's investing it and doing it all with his own money.
Was the test run down south?
Down south. From, from Lake Washington by Mohai, through the canal, and after he got under the bridge, the, the ferry operator, after they got under the bridge, he, he opened it up and it was just as smooth as can be with no wake and Wi-Fi, and people can work on it and everything else. So it just kind of remains to be seen how this thing goes, but I, I think there was hope that we could be part of that demonstration route since we are, as far as demonstration route is concerned, number one on the list, so. Nothing has been determined. There will be certainly public involvement and everything else, but nothing has been determined yet, so. I had the, the pleasure of cutting the ribbon at, at Morelands over the weekend, and Senator Frock and Representative Valdez was there. I keep butchering his name. I want to name him after the oil spill, and it's not Valdez, it's Valdez. So, and I was really, really grateful, they had a lot of nice things to say, so I was very pleased they were there. I don't know how many of you guys have gotten, I know, I think all of you have gotten invitations on the Special Olympics. I don't know if anybody else has responded that they want to go, but in any event, if you have tickets and all that, we'll be here, I think, tomorrow. I also want to take this opportunity, if you all have a chance, just go right down here at the entrance to the post office, right across from Cooley Smiles and the bank, there's some hanging flower baskets, and I'm telling you, those are really amazing. They're really pretty, marking the entrance to, you know, the hangar and everything. They're just spectacular. So I did want to mention that.
We, we used the same, for about six baskets, not all of them, but for about six baskets, we used the same florist as Inglewood Golf Course.
Yeah, I'm telling you, they're pretty awesome. And ADBC meeting starts tomorrow. I will be going, and if anybody else wants to vote, you know, I'm sure would love to have somebody down there to take over that responsibility, but other than that, that's all I have. If nothing else has come before us, we are adjourned.